Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 8th Hatfield Select Board meeting. As usual, I'll open the meeting tonight by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. Are we on?
Yes, we are on.
During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So, as usual, we open with some time for public forum. I'm assuming none of you are here for public forum. So, no one in the room is joining us for public forum. Is there anyone joining us online who wanted to have a moment for public forum? Okay, doesn't look like it. So, we'll go right to announcements. Obviously, our biggest announcement is that Luminaryum is coming up on Saturday, December 18th. It is on Saturday night. There's a schedule of events that I just want to read through briefly. About 5:30, we will have the town-wide lighting of the Luminaryum candles. So, anyone who's wanting to put candles out, that's about the time we'd like to have you light them. From 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Hatfield Public Library, families may drop in and choose a free kids' book to keep and make a holiday button. That's really nice. At 6:00 p.m., holiday blessings from Reverend Randy and Father Raymond, speeches from Select Board members, and musical selections from Smith Academy Band will happen on the front steps of Town Hall. No one needs to worry, I will not sing. The arrival of Santa Claus will be followed by refreshments, as usual, at the Hatfield Fire Station, which is great, we thank Chief Flaherty, who happens to be in the room here, for doing that. And then at 6:30 is the fireworks. The fireworks are going to be launched down by the pavilion. There will be no access to that area, so Billings Way will be closed completely, correct?
Only up to just past the Farm Museum, you can get it. You will be able to access the part of Billings Way.
Part of Billings Way. Okay. But people shouldn't think they can park down in the elementary lot or the -- obviously, they can't park in the Lions Pavilion Lot because it'll be staging for the launch of the fireworks. But just like last year, we just want to remind people that these fireworks will be able to be viewed from a lot of different places around town. You don't really have to be down here in the center of town. Now, I'm assuming, Bob, that just like last year, they'll shut the roads down. Remember last year, the traffic was going, but right when the fireworks were going to launch, they just stopped traffic where it was so that no cars were moving during the launching. Is that happening again?
That is my understanding with -- speaking with Chief DeKoschak, is essentially just a couple of minutes before 6:30, they will stop the flow of traffic at Main and School Street and then also at Prospect and Maple Street. So, that way, they have a couple of minutes to get people if they're trying to get into a particular driveway. But otherwise, they're really trying to limit the amount of moving vehicles so we don't have the -- they're trying to watch them and then driving at the same time. So, that is my understanding.
And it's very brief. It's a very -- it's just while the fireworks are going off and then those will be opened up again. It's really a safety thing.
Yes. I believe it's -- I think we're at 579 total shells is the show. So, it's the timing in between and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, it's going to be a big, quick display.
Yes, it should be less than 10 minutes.
Yeah, which will be -- it was great last year. It really was so great. And so, it's going to work. And I know from all different areas of town, I stopped at someone's house on North Hatfield Road and they said they could see them perfectly from their house last year. So, really, even from really far away, you can view them, which is nice. And then at 7:00 p.m., there will be Christmas caroling on the steps of the Congregational Church led by the church choir. And another reminder, because things are a little bit different now, we are now reminding people to keep their headlights on as they drive through Luminaryum. It used to be that people turned them off. And so, now, the Police Department is asking people to leave their headlights on as they drive through town. So, it's the prettiest night in the prettiest town, so I hope people will come out and will enjoy it. The other announcement I had was that for people who ordered the 350th Commemorative Books, those books are due to arrive here on December 14th. And anyone who ordered them will be getting an email about -- with instructions of when to pick them up and where to pick them up. So, that's nice. They'll be in by the holidays, which is great. I can't wait to see it in its entirety. I've seen bits and pieces and it's beautiful. Announcements?
No, I just hope everybody can participate, one way or another, in Luminaryum, whether to put out your candles, come down and sing, enjoy the festivities with -- it's a great time for the community. That's all.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Anything? No. Okay, thank you. So, we can get right into the approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 16th and the minutes from November 30th.
I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, our first order of business tonight is a COVID-19 update. Do we know who's giving us the COVID-19 update?
You know the numbers as well as I do, probably better.
All right. I guess I'll -- I'll help out.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
So, the -- our COVID team that we had put together last year has started to remeet on Monday mornings. And we did meet this week. The Code Red message that went out on Monday was off by one, and that was just a delay in one of the -- in some of the reporting. So, as of Monday morning, we did actually have 10 positive cases in the town of Hatfield. We had one that was questionable within the public schools. It was a positive by their in-school testing, but that does not get directly reported to Maven. So, that person had to go out and ultimately get a PCR test to confirm that. So, some people might see a few different numbers than what went out this week. And I believe your next topic is also talking about there's a change in how we're getting our information because North Hampton Public Health Department is going to start helping or taking over the COVID tracing for the town of Hatfield. So, we're kind of finalizing and working on how we're going to get the information. Hopefully, we're going to keep it on Mondays. It's just a couple of logistical things to work out, and they're very busy doing their vaccination clinics right now. So, bear with us, residents, for the next couple of weeks. It should get better no later than the first part of January. Once they kind of slow things down, we should be able to really hone in on what's going on. Ultimately, some of the cases were multiple in single households, and I know that's a big thing that people are interested in as residents, is that is it widespread? But we did have one residence with three, another residence with two. So, the numbers sound very, very high when you count 10 cases, but as you start breaking it down and there's multiples in one residence, it makes it for less of a town-wide spread as you're looking at the actual numbers, so.
And so, you have this information because of your EMS work?
Correct. So, the report that I gave was based off of what we had received from Claudia as of last Thursday. And that was the last day that Claudia was really keeping track of the numbers for the town of Hatfield. So, that's what I went on. I had gotten no new numbers over the weekend and then the one additional case. And unfortunately, the information got to me about three minutes after I recorded the Code Red message on Monday. So, that's the only difference that we have ultimately. And then we will hopefully by next week, we'll have a better handle on making sure that the information's getting to us.
So, hopefully, part of the discussion with the Board of Health will be the -- how we're going to handle the communication of this because, I mean, I appreciate that Bob does it and certainly, you know, he's someone that all of us in town trust and it's nice to hear information from him. And if you're willing to do that, I guess. But it is outside the scope of -- like, it should be on the Board of Health, I feel like, but we'll get to that.
Yeah, I think it's going to be okay by next week. It was still, you know, it was a couple of days and including a weekend to get this piece in place. I'd actually responded to our health agent earlier this afternoon just because of -- he was the one that's getting the emails. So, I kind of suggested, excuse me, that, you know, maybe Chair Oslie could also be added if it's feasible. And that might help out just because Mr. Kinnicki is very busy with a lot of other towns. And that's fine. That's what he does, but it would be nice to have somebody else have access still in Hatfield. They can just log in real quick and at least get the number to us, and that's perfectly fine.
I saw that email, Bob, and yeah, absolutely. I think Bob should be --
Yeah. I mean, we certainly appreciate what Mr. Kinnicki's doing, but obviously, he has a lot going on. So, if he can pass it on or have multiple people added to that email list that comes from North Hampton, because it is a secure email. So, that's not just that can go to anybody.
It has to go to somebody that has Hatfield as a priority and the communication with Hatfield residents as a priority.
Yes.
So, that'll be part of the next discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So, Bob, before you step away, I just -- can you -- and we've had this conversation collectively in the past year and a half. But in case anybody on TV picked up on what you said earlier, which was as far as the cases go, Maven, so, and a PCR test. So, can you just differentiate when the school does a test and it comes back positive, in their eyes, or that test comes back positive? It doesn't necessarily follow the Maven guidelines, which are the statewide system for reporting cases that have had a PCR test, right? I mean, I don't need you to get into the whole nitty-gritty, but just so people understand why we say, "Well, in Maven, it was this, but the schools may have reported that." Do you --
Sure. So, I believe I can answer most of this because I've been involved with this for so much.
And you say it much better than I do, for sure, so.
So, the testing that they're doing in the school, if they're doing what's called the test and stave, that's using the Binex Now test kits, that is ultimately an antigen test.
An antigen.
That is not what is considered the gold standard across the country as far as guaranteeing that it's a positive test. That is the actual PCR test that needs to be done. And that is the system that ultimately gets directly reported to Maven. There was communication with the school nurse that it's possible that some of their Binex testing, because they're using a school system called Crush the Curve, that that ultimately is also maybe making it to Maven, but we don't have that. And in the last few weeks, we've obviously had that discussion with Claudia, and it doesn't appear that that's getting to Maven. So, I'm not sure if that is just something that is specifically reported to Desi and they're not crossing over to DPH. But it seems like it's not there. Maybe it's something that they're working on, but currently, it is not that.
Okay. So, I think -- correct me if I'm wrong. So, if it has to do with the schools, or anybody for that matter, that gets the antigen test and it comes back positive, those folks are then sent to get a PCR test to confirm if, in fact, it's a COVID positive. Is that it in a nutshell, or is there more to it?
So, the state recommendation from DPH is that if you were to have a positive antigen test, the recommendation is to go and have a PCR test, and that will confirm that, yes, you are. If you choose not to, in the school realm, they're going to still consider that a positive case. They're obviously going to start the quarantine process that is also still part of DPH and CDC guidelines and saying, "Okay, you're going to stay out for a minimum of the 10 days. If you choose not to, you can get tested." And actually, we just found out on Tuesday, right? Yes, Tuesday. Basically, your testing after a possible exposure is day five, no matter what, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. Now, it's just day five is the day that you should go and get tested because of the incubation period that they're considering, so.
Okay. I hope I didn't muddy the waters for people listening or watching, but you know, there's just -- we all ultimately want to get to the end stage of if you're positive, stay home. But you know, I just -- when we were talking about two different types of testing, I just wanted to try to break it down for folks who didn't.
Correct.
And -- sorry.
And reading the guidelines from the state, as far as the antigen test goes, obviously, and Dr. Oslie's sitting behind me, he can correct me if I'm wrong, it shows that you've had some exposure to it. And reading some of the guidelines, it's also talking about how if you had had the vaccine, you could potentially test positive on an antigen test but still test negative on a PCR. So, there is that possibility that's out there.
Wow.
So, that's where it is because you're getting a trace that you're -- started to create the antibodies for it, and you could legitimately test negative under a PCR test. And that has happened, that there's positive antigen tests and you end up with a negative PCR.
So, it's not unlikely if, as our students, as the younger population now, as it's rolled down to the five and up, that some of these antigen tests in the schools could, in fact, be because of the vaccines?
It's possible, yes.
Possible. And I'm not trying to sway anybody, but just so people understand. Which brings me back to that's the importance of a PCR test ultimately, if there's a positive antigen test.
Yes. That is considered the gold standard in the state is, you know, it's an accurate test. They have very few false positives, especially now at the beginning. They were -- you had a few, but for the most part, they have it wrapped up now and they know exactly that if it's a positive PCR, it is. And people are showing up as, you know, they're positive, they're asymptomatic, positive and sick. Some people have no idea that they even have it. And so, we're kind of running the gamut across the board. So, the recommendation is, you know, if you end up doing an over-the-counter, the Binex Now, go ahead and get yourself PCR tested theoretically on day five from exposure.
Correct.
And that's the other caveat that a lot of people are having a problem with is when's the exposure? But that all has to do with who was the contact, who was the positive that you might have been in, so there's no --
I wonder if sometimes people test too soon. So, they have a possible exposure and, you know, for good reason, maybe they're a little nervous, they're a little anxious, and they test right away and it's probably not accurate.
Yes. I've heard stories, some in Hatfield, some from, you know, what my wife does, and people were getting tested a little bit too soon.
Right.
And, you know, you're kind of just giving yourself that chance that I might get a or a negative result, but it's because I also didn't wait long enough.
And then you think everything's --
Right. You think you're fine, you go out, and then in the end, all of a sudden, day seven, you start feeling symptoms.
There's just so much different information that you get from a variety of sources, many of which are probably not reliable. It's hard to sort it all out.
Unfortunately, this is changing. I mean, it seems like CDC and others are putting out different information every couple hours. And we realize that everything is changing with the virus, and that's hard -- that's why it's hard for people to keep up with what's actually going on.
And the fact that we're still learning and we're a year and a half into this is crazy.
Yes.
So, without going too far into the rabbit hole, because we do have this on as a -- but you brought up a good point with the school department, and I just want to make sure that we are making sure that the school department is interfacing properly with North Hampton, if that's who -- because we've had sort of that single point of contact here for COVID things, and now it's going to be changing. So, thanks for being on it. We'll -- I'm sure you'll be here for the rest of the discussion.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. And so, nice segue.
Speaking of Bob.
Yes. We'll bring another Bob. Dr. Bob.
Well --
Thanks for coming. Did you want to take a minute to explain all of this to townspeople?
Yeah, no, I think what Bob said is true and certainly the fact that things are constantly changing. Last week, we went over the guidelines and it was test after three days if you're unvaccinated and five if you've been vaccinated. Now, all of that's out and we're under -- just within a week's time.
Right. And, well, it could change again, but let's hope it's --
Hope not.
Let's hope we're getting to -- yeah. So, I was just thinking, maybe you could give a brief description of this memory -- what the new relationship is with North Hampton and give a little description of this for the sake -- for residents.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, like anything else, is evolving. We're -- initially, this whole idea of shared services actually came out about March of last year. A lot of the towns, state, DPH realized that with the hundreds of small towns that we have here in Massachusetts, all of them were scrambling to put together, you know, COVID coordinator, education, communications with the towns. And, you know, funding was kind of spotty in the beginning, too, and they just didn't have personnel. So, in March, the DPH came up with some money to help fund a program that would allow for some of the smaller towns to share services and benefit, yet some of the benefits that some of the larger municipalities have. And that's not to say even the larger towns and cities were also working to keep up, particularly when we had the major outbreaks. We experienced that here when things were cooking along so, you know, certain rate, they were fine. Then when we get this spikes, we just didn't have the people to do it. And the important thing is that we want to deliver quality public health to all the towns and our citizens. So, over the course of the spring, the Hartford -- I keep saying Hartford, it's Hampshire. I've been in Hartford too long. The Hampshire County Public Health Collaborative put -- applied for a grant and did this with the city of North Hampton and to basically create some shared services programs. That in July, they sent out RFR to the different town administrators, boards of health, looking for interest in participating in, you know, a shared program like this. And by -- right at the end of June is when the governor declared that the emergency is over, and with that, the funds dried up. So, that left the towns even more of a hot position, trying to continue monitoring without those support funds.
But we had CARES Act funds. I mean, what -- We did. Yeah. I mean, wasn't that what CARES Act funds were for?
That came later. Yeah, yeah. It was in August, I think.
CARES Act came early and was enough money to cover the costs of these things.
Yeah.
So, we always had the money to cover these.
We had the money, correct.
Through the CARES Act. Right.
Yeah. And so, you know, as far as the program, over the last several months, they've been putting together, you know, different profiles for the towns. They asked, had questionnaires about what our needs specifically would be, what we would like to, what services we'd like to participate in, and trying to, you know, sort of solidify their program. And it was just -- went up, Bob, as Bob mentioned, it was this past Thursday when North Hampton took over and Claudia stepped back as far as doing our monitoring. So, this is all very recent and current. Just to go over what the -- what is -- what services are covered in the grant. And let me also note that the grant is a three-year grant, so it's not just, you know, one year, then we're back having to scurry around and set something else new. And the anticipation is that if this works, the state will continue to fund programs like this. I've been, you know, doing the Board of Health for seven years or so, and during this time, there's a lot -- there's across the board moves to consolidate and regionalize all of the public health services. So, you know, we recognize that individual towns with, you know, volunteer or short-term non-professional health -- Board of Health people aren't delivering efficient healthcare. And, you know, they may turn over every three years. So, something like this is consistent and it delivers high-quality care and they're professional people that are doing this.
So, just to backtrack because I -- just to clarify for townspeople, because they don't -- we -- there's this grant, North Hampton has gotten this grant, has received this grant. And we've entered into a memorandum of understanding through the Board of Health. The Select Board did not do that, the Board of Health did. So, a memorandum of understanding between the two communities that outlines exactly how -- so, North Hampton will now be doing this all for Hatfield. And there is no cost to Hatfield.
There is no cost.
Which is really --
That's a great bonus.
Really a huge bonus. I just wanted you to go through it. I just want to make sure that I completely understand what we're getting and that townspeople do, and that's mainly so that people feel comfortable, that all of this is still going to be monitored and that there's -- all the resources are in place that we still need to be dealing with this. So, that's what I was hoping you'd actually speak to was the actual memorandum of understanding.
Absolutely, and that's what we'll do right now.
Okay.
But I wanted to give a little bit of background, knowing that, you know, why even do this. As far as, you know, just kind of an overview, and I'm going to kind of read a few of these things from the guidelines that I had -- information that I'd gotten from the North Hampton group. It -- the city of North Hampton was awarded the grant funds to provide shared public health nursing services and create a regional infectious disease database to track trends since residents often work, live, and visit multiple communities throughout the area. This also can be carried over to the schools, knowing that not all of the kids in our school are from Hatfield, but we have a number of school-choice kids from other towns. One of the, you know, they really emphasized there is no additional cost to the town of Hatfield. And one thing that I want to emphasize is that North Hampton assumes all of the administrative costs and personnel, so it eliminates our Town Hall staff from basically keeping time sheets. I was just signing time sheets for Claudia just this evening. They will cut the checks and pay the personnel and also deal with the auditing of the costs and the administrative grant. So, it takes a lot of that off of our plate.
On the administrative side, right.
Yep.
What exactly will North Hampton be doing for us?
What will North Hampton? Okay. Major, first one, contact tracing. So, they will be basically doing what Claudia did, monitoring Maven with positive cases. We'll do the contact tracing, reporting those cases and so that we can get that out to the people on Mondays on our Code Red reports. We're in our COVID group on Mondays, we discuss some of the details and trying to keep that consistent because a lot of the townspeople find that's an important thing to know, and we wanted to try to keep that timing consistent. One note is that right now, they do not have enough personnel to do the contact tracing and testing in the schools. We haven't -- our COVID coordinator --
Why would the school be doing contact tracing? Isn't that what our COVID coordinator did or now North Hampton? So, why would the school do contact tracing?
They wouldn't. Well, no, I'm saying they would not be able to.
North Hampton doesn't have enough.
Oh, North Hampton doesn't have enough. I thought you said our school department. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. So --
Bob, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So, are they ramping that up, though? I mean --
It depends on whether or not they have the personnel.
There's -- yeah. Well, I mean, that's fine if we don't -- if it's not necessary, but if all of a sudden there's an outbreak in North Hampton, in Hatfield, whoever else is part of this, they, you know, we're going to have to come up with a --
What's the backup plan?
Exactly.
So, heaven forbid we have a surge and they don't have the personnel to do it. I mean, we're in this agreement that they're going to do it. But if they don't -- is there a backup plan here in town?
They are incumbent to find the staff to do that, to do the tracing and follow-up.
That would be on North Hampton to do that, correct?
On North Hampton's case, yes. The -- also -- On Northampton's case, yes, yep. The, also, they will be active in COVID vaccination clinics. We had a good example of that this Saturday, when we had the five-to-eleven-year-olds vaccinated at the school. I, I have to admit, it was a very smoothly-run operation. I felt very comfortable with all of the nursing and vaccination staff that they had, one of which, as I understand it, is going to be perhaps our COVID-
Like dedicated to Hatfield.
Denise.
That was going to be one of my questions, is there, I don't know how they structured this. So, my question was, is there someone dedicated to Hatfield, or who, at least is, you know, Hatfield is prioritized with this person?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. And, and, you know, we don't want to have a new face showing up.
Or, and it also helps your board, and maybe people like Bob, who need to interact with them, to have one person, one point of contact there.
Absolutely.
So, they're not getting different people all the time. And then, in return, who is identified here in town as the person that Northampton contacts?
That's what we're still working out. It had, just with this starting last week, Charlie was the one that was receiving those, but we've got to work that out where-
I mean, it wouldn't be the Board of Health, the member of the Board of Health?
More than one person has to be able to receive those numbers.
I would hope that the Board of Health would take that responsibility.
One of us would, would be responsible for that. So, you know, again, communication is important. You know, we talked about how we wanted some of those details to work, but it's still finding what works most efficiently and gets the information out. And we talked about that again during our Monday COVID committee.
I mean, I certainly hope that Bob's, you know, feelings that this would happen within a couple of weeks is, would be great, because we are coming up into the holidays, and we know what happened last year. After the holidays, there were some numbers, and so we want to make sure that. My other question, and I had touched on it a little bit before, is the interfacing, the, the school department interfacing with Northampton, Bob. And how will that happen? Because I think that they need a lot of support. I know, I can tell you personally, there's been some inconsistencies with some of the response things the school has done. And so, I'm just, how do we get on top of that? And is there a role for Northampton in that, in assisting them with that? Because they have a big job and not a lot of people to do it over there.
Yeah, and right now, Liz Kugler is our school liaison person. She works with Jean and the other nurses. Claudia had been very close, in very close contact with her as well. We're going to have to develop that rapport-
With Northampton.
With the Northampton.
Okay. Have you started working on that with the nursing staff over there? Because I would think that would be an incredibly important piece for now.
We have been making those, yes. Yeah, I've been speaking with a couple of the people that are managing the program.
So, I read through the agreement. You did mention that this is a three-year grant, so I, there's no end date for this memorandum of understanding? It just seems to be, it's just going to be enforced, I guess, until the grant?
Runs out.
And we see what happens subsequently funding.
It would have to be renegotiated, reassessed, if, as long as funds were available to continue with this type of a program.
Does it mention anything about, it doesn't, it doesn't mention anything about when the funding ceases?
No, no. But, you know, the, as you probably noticed, the entirety of the MOU is a little over a page, so.
Yeah, it's very brief, MOU. One of the, one of the shortest I've ever seen. So, in, in number four responsibilities of the town of Hatfield, the last line is the town of Hatfield will develop protocol with the city of Northampton to determine when shared PHN will be utilized. So, that's what you're talking about with working on that communication piece with the schools and everything?
Mm-hmm.
And also, just to clarify, and so PHN stands for the Public Health Nursing, just for people that don't have the paperwork in front of them. They're monitoring more than just COVID, correct?
They are monitoring all of Maven.
All of Maven, which is any-
Tick-borne, insect-borne.
Communicable type.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted the people to realize it's not a, it's not a COVID-only, it's going to be, so, a change in the process, the way we've been doing things.
Other communicable things.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
So, I, you know, overall, it's, it seems like a win-win scenario for small towns like Hatfield, where we get more services. And, you know, one thing, I don't know if we hit on, touched on that, but the programming, that basically involves one of the, some of the public health nurses putting together educational material on various diseases, like diabetes, you know, smoking, substance abuse. I can think of a few others, like fall prevention for the seniors, injury prevention.
That would be under this?
Yeah, that would, yes. But, on Saturday, the nurse said, flat out, until we're done with the vaccination clinic, none of these value-added things-
So, now, if I understand, we've been paying Mr. Knickie extra through COVID, correct?
No.
No.
No, I verified, we-
No, we haven't, okay.
He's been actually putting in a lot of extra time-
Okay.
-without any additional.
Okay. But this will alleviate some of what he's having to do right now.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would agree with you, Bob. It definitely sounds like a win-win, at, at least financially upfront. And now, we're just going to have to see from, from what we're used to as a community, with the communication of whoever is in charge of the Maven system and keeping our emergency services people updated and things like that. So, this just kicked off basically on Friday, right?
It's all-
So, depending when you're watching this meeting, it started four days ago from the date of this meeting. And so, we would expect that there'll be some communications back and forth to get everybody sort of, you know, who's who and figuring things out, although we've gotten a lot of the information here, and I know you've shared Hatfield's information with Northampton already, so.
Yes.
That, for me, ultimately is, is, it's not a, that's where I want to make sure that there's, you know, we don't miss any beats. Not just the financial part, but more the communication.
Oh, absolutely.
Because obviously, the, you know, the more information, and the sooner we get it, it's, as it relates to COVID, is, is the important piece of this right now, so.
Right. I agree. That's, that's the, the most important thing to focus on. I think, you know, that any, any time we're, we're able to collaborate with another community and, and share resources, or having, allow us to tap into some resources we don't normally have because of the size of our community is a good thing. So, I think that this is great. There may be a couple bumps in the road as we figure out all of the, you know, how this is going to work, but I think in, in the long run, that'll be a very good thing.
Yep, I agree. I think the good thing, too, is it's, the process is new, but what the different, but what we've been doing for testing, what Northampton, what everybody in the world's been doing, is not new. So, now it's a matter of, right, bringing it all together under, under the one umbrella through Northampton, and, and just like Diana mentioned, just working out the kinks, if, if there are any. But the processes are, the, the testing processes are in place. Now, it's just a matter of, of bringing it together. Yeah.
Great.
Any other questions?
Do you have anything?
No, I just, it's a work in progress.
So, I, I know we have the right people in place, and I think it's going to work out fine. You've just got to let, let it run its course.
Yeah, I, when, when I got the email from you about this, and you had mentioned Lauren Devine in Northampton, and she is terrific. She's really terrific. Daven, excuse me. But she's, she's really great. So, was happy to see that she's involved with this, so.
And I've known a lot of those people for a number of years, and, and also the HPA, HP, HCHPC. I was on the executive board of that for a few years when I first came on board here in Hatfield. So, I know, you know, they're all good people and have good backgrounds and really want to deliver a good, quality service. So, I, so I felt very comfortable pursuing this.
I, I thank you for coming and explaining all this to us. I think that's great.
And I, I would just say, as the, you know, elected public health officials, you know, I would hope that you would be very involved in that communication between them, between Northampton and Hatfield on an ongoing basis.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And townspeople, maybe a little different for townspeople, because we've been kind of spoiled by having Ed Carey for so long, Bob's been a resource to, to reach out, you know, because we have specific questions sometimes. And I'm, is there, will, will townspeople be able to reach out to the Northampton Public Health Department? If they have questions about exposure, or when to test, or that sort of thing, who, who would they turn to?
That's a good question.
Should it be you? I mean, you, you are still the public, I mean, so, I would think they, they would reach out to you.
Yeah, that's-
Because I've had those questions, you know, over, over the course of the last, you know, different questions about, and, you know, people should know who to go to. So, it should be you, Liz, or Jeff?
Mm-hmm. Typically, what would happen if a resident called in, Karen would take the call, you know, so-and-so had a question about exposure or symptoms, she would either, when we had Claudia, she would, or, or Carey, we would send it directly to the coordinator, because it would save another step of sending it to one of the three board members to look at that and say, no, that's something that's in the coordinator's bailiwick.
So, who, I mean, you, you mean you couldn't answer a question like that?
It depended on what it was.
Well, that, I was going to say, do you think maybe you could check with Northampton on, on this and say, listen?
I will, absolutely, yeah. Because we want to try to maintain that same, same protocol.
Yeah, I mean, people have a lot of questions about this still, you know, and there needs to be someone that they can ask those questions. And, I, I mean, it would be nice if it was someone in town.
Yep.
So, seems like the move.
All right.
Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
I hope it all works out.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it will.
Thanks for coordinating it. Yeah, good.
Very good, thank you. You know, I, I just want to say that I, just to backtrack a little bit, I think I may have misspoke. So, the, this is about the commemorative books, so I'm totally switching gears here. I just got a, a text from Bob Betsel. So, there's going to be a pickup at the town hall next Tuesday night from 5:00 to 7:00. So, anyone who ordered a book and can come to town hall between 5:00 and 7:00 next Tuesday night, that is December 14th.
It's Tuesday 14th.
From 5:00 to 7:00 can come pick them up. And then, if you can't come, then, they're going to be left in the collector's office, and you can pick them up during her normal hours. So, sorry, I-
So, there.
I was, I was wrong. I didn't have the exact, correct information. So, I just wanted to make sure people knew that. So, getting back to the agenda. Next, we have Chief Flaherty here again.
Seen a pattern.
Yeah, no, you're, you're like a regular, Bob.
Become a regular.
To talk about the future of the fire department.
So, I, I brought this up to Marlene a few weeks ago, and unfortunately, I missed the meeting and wasn't able to bring this up.
You got a call.
Well, you had a call.
And part of that is actually, in that case, you know, I, I had to leave, I was unable to attend a meeting because I had to go on an emergency call. And that's kind of the, the crux of where I'm coming to you folks, and kind of giving you a little bit of the, the heads up, to an extent, is, we are getting busier. I know a lot of people in town think that we are not busy, but we are. And I've actually been running the numbers over the last couple of days, and comparing from year to year. And on the fireside alone, to date, or as of the 6th, when I ran the report, we're actually already up 35 calls just on the fireside alone.
Since July?
For, for the year. We run the calendar year when we run our reporting. And obviously, we still have, you know, 25 days left from when I ran the report. So, we're, we're significantly higher on the fireside. A lot of them are happening in the evenings and happening on the weekends. And unfortunately, we're just running into is that we don't have as many volunteers as we did a few years ago. And we, even the volunteers that we have now, they're, they are busy. So, sometimes it runs out that we, we can only put one or two people in a fire truck. And if we were to, to look at the national standard that's put out by National Fire Protection Association, we are woefully understaffed. And they actually have a, a number, and especially for a call department, we should be looking at a minimum of 16 firefighters on a scene within the first 10 minutes for a structured fire. And there is no way that we can possibly do that here. And I'm not saying that we would ever, we're getting to that point right now. But I need the, the residents to understand that there's numerous times over the last few months, specifically, but even the last couple of years, that we are getting one in two people responding on fire calls. I have Deputy Chief Beldon with me here tonight, and in the last month, him and I have been on, just, just him and I, have been on more fire calls than most of the rest of the department combined, ultimately.
Did you want to come up, too, Alan? Okay. Alan's perfectly happy back there.
Yeah, he's here to support, so that's-
Okay.
That's good. But, but it is a thing. You know, people have families, they have other jobs, they have other commitments, which is causing them to not be available. And on the ambulance side, it's just as bad. We have a total of 13 EMTs and paramedics, three paramedics, and 10 basics, except I have a couple of basics that were out on injuries, I have a couple that are brand-new EMT basics, so they're still going through their training. I can't put them out necessarily by themselves yet, or out even with another basic. They might be able to work with me, because I can run the call a little bit, I've been doing this a long time. So, we, we're kind of hurting for staffing, and I'm not showing a lot of people showing interest. I've had to sign out in front of the town hall since August or so. We've had a couple of people come in, they've grabbed applications, they've talked to me about what's involved, I've given them all the information. Couple of them I've heard back from, couple of them I've, that was it. They, they came in, they grabbed an application, and that was it. So, I'm just, I'm kind of coming to, to give you, the folks, the heads up, as, as the chief elected officials, that the town of Hatfield is, is small. You know, we have 3,300 residents in town, but fire, police, and ambulance have to respond to everything within the town line. So, we have 91, we have businesses, and the calls are going up, and we just don't have the staffing. We are getting to that point where I think, and, and part of my, one of my budget proposals coming forward this year will, to be to put on additional staffing in the evening. I'm finding myself, and I have the numbers here, we are 212 ambulance responses that Hatfield has covered. That does not count what we have not been able to cover due to lack of staff. And me personally, I've been on over 126 out of 212 calls this year. I, I definitely like my job, I love my job, but I also can't become a 24/7/365, I have to go on every single call. And unfortunately, that's a lot of what it's come to now because of the lack of staffing. I, I don't want to give up the calls to mutual aid ambulance, so I'm going on the calls, and it's a catch-22. I'm either going on the calls, or we're giving them up. And as we know, that doesn't work well for anybody, it doesn't work well for our mutual aid partners, it doesn't work well for our residents, because they have a delayed patient care. So, the, ultimately the answer would be is to, to try to follow a little bit of what the police do, and put on 16 hours a day of coverage. The caveat being is that police relate, can kind of run with one, I need two. It's the only way it works at this point. We could, we can work on different modes and, and how that goes, but ultimately, it's going to come down to, I think, that we need to, the town of Hatfield kind of has to take that next leap and realize that on any given day, there's 7,000 people coming through the town of Hatfield. And that's who we, as fire, police, and ambulance, have to respond to. And, and the calls, the call severity is also going up. We're actually about 85% of our calls are at the ALS level, which then means, you know, either myself, or, or one of the other two paramedics are having to be on the call, or we're getting Northampton. And every time Northampton comes to us, it takes a truck out of their community. And, you know, it, it's just a burden on, on the district, or on the region as a whole.
And a longer response.
And longer response times. I mean, we've, we got to the point in October, we actually got so far that Highland Ambulance out of Goshen ended up coming and doing a call in our town. And I, I cringe when I have to say that, but just nobody else was available. Nobody was in Hatfield to cover the ambulance, and then our mutual aid partners- Nobody was in Hatfield to cover the ambulance and then our mutual aid partners, there was nobody available. And I don't want to see something drastic happen to a resident because we can't staff our truck. But it is a reality is that we are in, almost into 2022 and we are still running as a call volunteer department for the most part. So it's, it's kind of time that the, the town, the select board, the finance committee, is really going to have to take a, a big look at this as we move into the budget season in the early part of 2022. And potentially, or hopefully, provide some funding for the fire department. We've run with pretty much the same budget for a number of years, short of a couple of ups and downs. But it, it really is the time and that we have to, we have to grow. We have a lot more going on in town and we just don't have the staffing ultimately. And, and what we do have, the calls are being put onto the backs of a very small number of people. And it's becoming tiresome for them. They're getting burnt out because it's the same repetitive people.
What you're saying is the standby coverage that we have for the ambulance, there's not enough of staff to do the standby coverage.
Correct.
Even though we implemented standby coverage, now we don't have the people.
So our, our daytime coverage Monday through Friday, since July 26th, when we put on the full-time firefighter EMT, we haven't missed calls during that time period. So that, that fixed that initial problem where myself and Deputy Chief Gunn had come in to you folks last year and said, you know, on that, during that time period from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, in a year, we're losing, we're losing essentially $18,500 worth of revenue because obviously that's what a lot of this comes down to. And by putting the full-time person on, we're getting a lot more done during the course of the day in the station, but also that we're covering the calls. So it's, it's certainly been beneficial here for the first few months, but the nights and the weekends are still becoming a problem of not having enough people to, to cover the calls.
So if you did the 16-hour coverage, how much staff, full-time staff would be required?
So when I, when I looked at the numbers, I kind of broke it down and I looked at, what are, what is the total number of shifts that were open instead? Because I know that currently I have staff that if they knew that they had a set shift, they would make themselves available. But it's because it's, well, I'm going to go to dinner and then all of a sudden the pager goes off and now they're not available. So they didn't, they're not being able to plan for it. If they knew that they had an eight-hour shift, two nights a week, it would be easy. So ultimately it comes down to is that there are, it's a total with two people, it's 18 total shifts. It's seven, or nine shifts with two personnel per shift right now that we do not cover. The overnight, I re-implemented. I had a meeting with Chair Zinal in Northampton Fire back in August, I believe, because they had some concerns about how often they were coming here. I re-implemented an overnight on-call that we had kind of stopped doing for a few years. And to the best of my knowledge, we missed one and it was only a week or two ago and that was a fluke thing. Person's pager died and they missed the call. It, it's a piece of electronic equipment, things happen. But other than that, we've, we've covered all the calls. I have firefighters covering the ambulance is the other caveat that I should throw out there is that I have the numbers here. Since I implemented first responders and fire, so firefighters being able to help cross-staff the ambulance in January of this year, they've actually helped us avoid calling mutual aid 42 times. And that's above and beyond what we should be asking of them in the grand scheme of things. I'm grateful that they do it. Deputy Chief Bell and I have been on tons and tons of ambulance calls together. I think he could pass the test now, which would be great. But that's kind of what we're relegated to now is we've, we've had to put other things in place so we don't have to call in our mutual aid. We're not giving up the calls. The patients are getting taken care, care of.
So on those calls, like Alan drives and you?
I'll drive and the EMT is in the back, yes.
So on the, on the 16-hour coverage, if you had set shifts, would you have enough of volunteers to cover two days a week or three days a week or something like that?
As of right now, I think with my, the staff that I already have, knowing that they would be dedicated for a time period, I probably could fill it. I also, you know, almost two years that I took over as chief, I've probably received a dozen, maybe dozen and a half calls of people looking to come and work here, but we don't offer shifts and that's what most of the people are looking to do and.
So they're looking for like a couple shifts?
Yeah, they're looking, yeah, most of them are not looking for a full-time.
You're not looking for a full-timer, you're looking for?
If I could get away with not hiring it necessarily as a full-time staff, because obviously that is beneficial to the town, we don't owe them benefits. And there's tons of people and that's kind of how EMS and fire has worked for, for decades, that they might work somewhere else full-time, they're just, eh, I'll come and work for you for one or two days a week, make some extra money. I'm fairly confident that I could fill every one of these shifts and not have to worry about hiring a full-time person beyond what I have.
So do you have, do you have any numbers on the cost and what money we'd get from the ambulance if we did it or any kind of cost comparison? I mean, do you, do you have some numbers that you can throw out?
So some rough numbers. So I, I ran it on having a paramedic and a basic for the additional eight hours a day. So running ultimately from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. To put both of them on for the nine shifts ultimately, so the weekend days as well are included because that's another time we're having an issue, we would be looking at an additional $160,000 a year.
How much?
$160,000.
$160,000.
Yes. The lost revenue that, I don't have all the specific numbers. I have our dispatch center, I'll have those numbers on Friday. They don't have a good way to filter the numbers in their reporting. I would venture to say based off of what we had from the first part of the year, we're probably at about $45,000 in lost revenue from giving up calls to mutual aid as of right now. So. So if you want to take that and factor that into the, the total, it, it sounds like a high number and it is, but we would be recovering some of those funds because we're not giving up all those calls that we have been recently. And that, that honestly is, is the estimate that I have as of right now.
So I just want to backtrack. You said that you're responsible for 7,000 people a day. Is that the estimate of people who like come into work or travel through? Or I'm curious what that number is?
So DOT, I was talking to some folks, DOT, when they do their testing out there and they put the box out, they've actually calculated, there's about 7,000 or 8,000 cars a day that are going up and down Route 5 alone. Obviously it, it's transient, the people are moving, but any one of those cars could ultimately cause an accident and now we have to respond. So those are people that, you know, they're not, they're not taxpayers, but we still have a duty to react, a duty to respond.
That's not 91, that's just five and 10.
That's just five and 10. I don't even know what the number is for 91. I've heard it's in the 15,000 a day.
Some days probably a lot more.
Yeah, I bet, yeah. Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, I was just, and I thought for townspeople, that should be some clarification. And, you know, there are businesses in town and sizable businesses that bring people in and that have calls and situations.
CNS is running multiple, you know, they run 24/7. I know the day is obviously their highest number of, of staff. I think they're sitting about 100 or 110 during the day. I think the, the evening shift is still running at about 60, 65 people on a night. Brockway Smith is running two shifts, to the best of my knowledge, because I still see him out there. So that's a lot of people that are still in town at any given time, you know, kind of up until 11 o'clock. Things do slow down. I could tell you that, I ran the numbers, daytime calls are, for this year, 118 are from 7:00 to 3:00. There's 70 from 3:00 to 11:00. And then on the overnights, we're actually down to, I think it was 24.
So that really is the, so I, I'm curious what your thoughts are on, you know, there's, you're, you're experiencing a little bit of a problem with people responding. Would that maybe even get worse if you had full-timers on? Would people feel like, I mean, maybe, I, I guess I'm curious, obviously if you, if it was a tone for a structured fire, you might expect more response?
And unfortunately, I hate to say it, but it's been that way for almost 20 years that I've been on the department is that we, people come out for the, what sounds like the big and fun and exciting call in their mind, but the fifth time to the same residence or the same property.
False alarm, fire alarm.
We don't get the same response and that's kind of the nature of it. I, I, talking to the members, we've been, we've been talking internally about this and for the most part, the members seem to be on board and it's just because they have a lot to do. You know, people are running little side businesses and things like that. And it's just one of those things that they're, they don't have the availability to go. They go when they can, but they're not available so often now because of their other things going on in life. It's caused a problem for us. And obviously that's, that's the big part of what I'm looking at is, are we covering our calls? Do we have the right amount of staffing? Is it going to be safe, whether it's a fire call or an ambulance call? And that's my concern now is, we're not. We're going to numerous calls with, you know, one in two people and that's not what it should be on the fireside.
So you, you feel that the, if, if calls were toned out, that it was clear was more than a two-person response, you, you think that there would still be the response from?
I believe so, yes.
Is this something that could be phased in over a couple of years? Instead of going right to 16-hour shifts, you know, for the whole year, it's 25%, 50%? Just to see the budget slowly go up instead of, you know, a $110,000 hit in one year? I'm just curious, that's all.
I think I probably could, if it, if it came down to it, and Deputy Chief Bell and I have talked about this ad nauseam, that the weekends are honestly probably the worst. So if I had to choose a, a particular program to, to implement, it would try to be to put 16-hour day coverage on Saturday and Sunday because that is our worst time. I mean, I, the department is relatively young. Alan and I happen to be like the old guys on the department now. It's hard to say, but, but people are, you know, they're having other functions, they, they like to have gatherings, things like that, which is preventing them. So the weekends are probably the, the hardest to try to get staffing. The evenings, still hard, but a little bit better. You know, we have staff that they're home for two weeks and they're gone for three weeks. They're home for three weeks, gone for a month.
Do you have any numbers on if you started with just the weekends, what that would entail or cost, more or less?
The, covering the weekends, I believe, is $19,000 off the top of my head. I don't have that, that particular sheet in front of me.
Okay. But more or less, you're talking $20,000 or so, right?
I mean, obviously this is just a preliminary discussion. This is all going to have to happen with the financial team when we hit budget season. And you have a lot of the information, if I know you, Bob, you have all of the information gathered. You know, but I think those are good questions and, and those are questions that I think it's fair to expect from the finance committee. Like what if we did it this way? Can you break it down different ways?
I guess I'm kind of bringing it to you as the, the full project, so to speak, and what it would be the, the worst case. And then obviously there's other options to pare it down is, you know, only weekends or only the weeknights. Do you put one EMT firefighter on duty and then we're still relying on the calls because then you know that you would at least get it? There's, there's certainly some other options there, but I wanted to, it was time.
And it's good for townspeople to hear this as well.
So I, I want to thank Chief Flaherty for coming, you know, and letting us know and the townspeople know. I, I think what I would suggest, I don't know how my colleagues feel or how you feel, Bob, is maybe after the first of the year, shortly after the first of the year, which is only in three weeks. And once you have the December numbers for all the calls and you have a full year's worth of information and then we can do whatever you think is appropriate, the last two years, three years, whatever, have a meeting with, with, with us or, or the liaison or something and maybe sit down and ultimately say, you know, option one would be like for everything you really think you need.
Sure.
Option two would be, well, this will get us rolling and, and keep people more safe maybe or, or quicker responses. And then option three. And, and I think that'll be important for, for you, for you guys and, and for us and the finance committee and then ultimately town meeting to say, you know, here's what, here's where we are, here's what we need, here's the anticipated cost, and here's, more importantly, here's the anticipated benefit for, for increasing the staff. I, I mean, that would be my suggestion, once kind of all the final calendar year numbers are in and then we're really, you know, we, we can really beat down on it and find out exactly what makes sense and.
And I'll have the, the number of, you know, missed ambulance calls to date anyway.
Yeah.
Probably by Friday or Monday at the latest.
Yeah.
So that, that's obviously the, a big part of this is that how many are we missing?
Yeah.
Which then is, is delaying the patient care and then in turn that is obviously a revenue piece that, that goes along with this on the ambulance side.
Right.
And the other, you know, there's the safety of the residents, but there's the safety of the members of your department as well.
Right, right.
You know, which we, we take both of those very seriously.
And I think by doing the historic data, going back a few years, we can see, you know, as our population is aging and as things happen and what have you, you know, if the trend is we're seeing things go up, there, there's no particular reason it would make us think, if, if it's a trend over a number of years, that it's all of a sudden going to drop off, right? So, so you'd have to think and say, well, if it's been going up by this percentage the last two years, three years, four years, chances are it'll at least stay the same as it is this year or, or more likely go up depending on what the trend is.
Yes.
You know, and that, that's how we have to base our decisions. I mean, let's face it, we all hope there'd never be an ambulance call in Hatfield, right? But that's not the, that's what we hope, but that's not the reality.
But if we need one, we hope it shows up.
If we need one, we want someone showing up.
Absolutely.
Quickly.
Absolutely.
So, so I, I think after the first of the year, maybe the final year-end numbers are in, we can sit and, you know, have a conversation, you know, across the, across the parking lot or something, just to, you know, talk it out.
And, you know, this is also an opportunity really to, even if you were to get all of the staffing, there'd still be a need for call firefighters and certainly EMTs. So I, you know, anyone listening to this who might have an interest in something like that, you know, I know that there's a lot of great training that you guys provide, there's a lot of camaraderie on the department, there's weekly training, it's a really terrific bunch of residents, there's men, there's women.
Yes.
And I think it's, so this is a good opportunity to maybe put that out there that if anyone's been thinking about that.
We've always been looking for more, you know, the signs out there, we've had it on our Facebook page, our websites, you know, we talk to, talk to residents when we're out and about and some people that have come in have been worded out, some people definitely saw it on, on electronic means, whichever version of it. And it, it has helped. I mean, it's, it's drawn up the numbers a little bit or, or the people of coming in interested. But then sometimes people see what they think the commitment might be and it, it's scary for some folks, so.
Do you do any outreach at, at Smith Academy? Because I, I mean, I know that a lot of those, those students may be going on to four-year colleges, so they may be leaving school, but there might be students there who are going to stay local, who aren't going to go to college, are going to go to community college. You know, it might be a nice way to maybe pick up, you know, one or two here and there.
So I actually, I had a plan when I first took over as chief last February of 2020 and to try to get into the school in the, in the springtime before the seniors graduated. And then unfortunately, we all know what happened. So that kind of put that plan on hold for a little while and obviously the schools aren't keen on having a lot of extra visitors. But I think working with the administration and we get in there, our firefighter EMT, Ricky Siliberto, you know, he's, he's a benefit because he's also relatively close to their age because he's very young.
Yes.
So, and he's very good technology-wise and everything. He's helped out with a handful of things that I can do, but he's just better at it when it comes to the technology. So we're actually working and I think he actually has it ready to go as a pamphlet and things like that. So we have a lot ready to go. Unfortunately, a little bit of COVID has kind of curtailed how quickly we could roll some of these things out. But definitely, I appreciate your time. I know this was a lot and it's a lot for the residents ultimately to take in and, and it's a high dollar number. But this was really just to kind of bring it to the forefront that this is where we've been going for a while. And, you know, Deputy Chief Beldon has anything he really wants to add to it, but. Yeah.
I think, you know, residents are overwhelmingly supportive of our emergency services department. And you, really where you can see that is in like the apparatus requests that go to town meeting, whether it's, you know, ambulance, fire, cruisers, whatever, you know, townspeople are supportive of those things.
Very much.
People have to understand, we also have to have the people to staff them and run them and so.
New equipment's nice, but if nobody's there to, to take it out of the station,[1765.76] that kind of defeats the purpose, so.
You don't need a gathering, does.
Well, it's a, this is a good starting point, Bob.
I appreciate your time. At least some of the information's out to the residents, and it's out to you folks now, and it'll be coming up as we move into the budget year and the new year.
Yeah, and then we should meet after the, after the first of the year, you know. We'll get together, you know, because it's budget season, right?
Yeah, we're there.
A new year, it's a new budget, so...
We talk about this stuff a lot.
Yeah.
And just for your reference, we are, I have looked at, there are grants out there. Obviously, I got the AFG grant for next year, so that's there. I'm actually, I'm almost done, I'm submitting another AFG grant, so I'm going to be running two concurrently.
Good.
And I'm actually looking at applying for a SAFER grant, because my, my idea is that the worst thing that they can tell me is no. That's fine, it's only my time to do the work of, of doing the grant. And that would actually kind of benefit the town, because if we were to be awarded the SAFER grant, that is for staffing, for safe, safe firefighting. They would actually cover the full salary and benefits for whatever we were to apply for, for three years.
That'd be great.
So that would actually give the town a chance to do more of a phased-in, but seeing how much it's going to cost, and see what the benefit is. And if, if, obviously, if it didn't seem like it was a benefit, we could curtail it after that, but it would certainly give us that opportunity. So for those residents out there, I, I think everybody knows, I'm clearly looking for other funding sources for everything, equipment, staffing, you name it. I'm looking for grants all over the place.
And being successful.
Yes. You know, another one just went in, and I, I know I've got another $12,500 coming after January 7th, so.
Excellent.
Nice job.
Bob, thank you. Chief Belden, Deputy Chief Belden, excuse me.
Thank you, guys.
Gave you a little promotion.
Chair, would you mind if we went out of order and took up topic number five regarding the Hatfield Housing Authority?
I think that's fine, because we have a, a number of people, we have a number of people joining us online for this, and we have Brenna here in person. So yeah, I think that would be great.
Open Space Committee has been postponed.
Even though I know Brenna's fascinated by all of what's going on here tonight. Would you like to come up to the microphone or, or maybe? I mean, it's actually, is it you on the, the agenda, or is it really Mr. Smith?
My understanding is Mr. Smith.
So, so Chris, Christopher Smith is actually our fifth topic tonight. As a Hatfield Housing Authority member, he wants to discuss the safety of Kapewalk residents accessing the crosswalk on School Street, and Mr. Smith is joining us online tonight. Hi, Chris.
Hello. How are you?
Good.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So we, this topic came up at our last housing authority meeting, and the board thought that since this is really the purview of the select board, the roadway, the crosswalk and so on, that we bring this concern to you and that you deal with it as you see fit. I've seen some email between Ed Jaworski and the chief and so on, suggesting possibility of a committee that might want to look at this and make recommendations. I can tell you as a, as a senior myself who goes to the senior lunch, I hear quite often of some fear trying to get across the roadway there. And this is, I think, in part having to do with the success of the Council on Aging having more programs and more interest from the Kapewalk residents. And so we're seeing more pedestrian traffic.
Can I ask you, Chris, can I ask you just to backtrack a little? So you didn't really describe your concern. What are your specific concerns?
Okay, the, let's, okay, so the concern is the crosswalk itself and the fact that even when the lights are flashing...
Do you mean the one going to, which one?
The, the new lights that were installed.
There you go.
Okay.
And the cross, the, the crosswalk, the new crosswalk that's been put in.
On School Street?
On School Street. That the, on many occasions, the cars are not yielding to people in the crosswalk, even with the lights on. And in fact, I tested it a couple of weeks ago after lunch from a period between 12:30 and 1:00, and 18 cars went by and three did not stop. When I started the lights and started, I was in the crosswalk. In fact, I almost got hit by a FedEx truck. So it, I, I do understand where, what their concern is. So John Wilks is on and Brenna, of course, Brenna probably hears more about this than I do. So Brenna wants to add on to that, you know, that'd be good.
Brenna, would you, did you want to share what your...
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
So Chris, thanks for the information. So we did actually talk about this last, at our last meeting, two or three weeks ago, and, and Chief DeKoschak was here, right?
Yeah, we did talk about this.
So, so I, I guess my question would be, and I don't disagree with anything you said, Chris, because I've been pushing the whole people in crosswalk things for the last year, because we've got crosswalks everywhere in town, it seems, that, that cars need to obey the laws and, and when people are, for me, it's if they're near a crosswalk, but for sure, if they're in a crosswalk or starting to walk, they need to stop. So having said that, though, I, I think that we can keep saying it and keep saying it, but I, I think it would be up to the police department if there's going to be something further to happen at this point. And, and I don't know what that would be, I mean...
Well, I think the chief said they were monitoring the crosswalk, you know, when they were able to throughout the day at various times.
Yeah, I can't explain why people in a car would, would not, A, stop for a pedestrian, or B, not see the flashing light, knowing that there's a pedestrian about to enter the crosswalk if they're not in there.
Somewhat new, you know, that whole with the lights and all of that, and, and townspeople need to get used to it. But we talked to that, we spoke to that at, at that same meeting you're talking about, you know, letting residents know that it's there. And, and it's, what's not new is that we have elderly housing in the center of town, and people should always be concerned as they drive. There's also a lot of schoolchildren in that area, people playing on the basketball courts or walking to or from school. So in that, Chris is right, in that area, there's, you know, there's a lot of reason to slow down and, you know, be alert and conscientious and courteous as, as people may be in the crosswalk.
Okay. Well, I, if, if it's okay, I could share three ideas that I've heard at senior lunch. And the first is, and I hadn't noticed this before, but the signs and the flashing lights appear to be a little too high. If you tried, next time you're driving through, you might notice that they are sort of a little, that if they were lowered, they might be more effective. The second item is if we change the flashing lights to red lights, flashing red lights, that would cause people to know they have to stop.
I'm not, well...
And three is to elevate the crosswalk or a speed bump, which I, it's sort of serendipity. There was a featured story on Channel 22 this morning about the increase, 800% increase pedestrian fatalities in the city, and four of them are right in front of the city library. And they're going to add flashing lights and an elevated or raised side, crosswalk. And I'll leave it at that. So I'll turn, let Brenna speak to it as well.
I, I would say, I, I'm guessing that there's probably guidelines on the height of the lights, the type of color that can be shown. And I'm, I'm not trying to disagree with anything, Chris. I, I'm just guessing that when the state did the project, there's probably guidelines that said the lights have to be this high, they've got to shine this high, they've got to be this far apart, I don't know. Phil just walked up to the microphone to, to address this as the DPW director, so...
So under Mass DOT guidelines with controls, just about everything to do with any roadwork or signage or anything, the crosswalk, as well as the signs, as well as the color of the lights are all, are all under those guidelines. So to change it to red is impossible, just about. And to lower that crosswalk sign is probably the same. An elevated crosswalk, it might work. I, myself, I think that when they relocated that crosswalk to the edge of the town hall driveway is the prob, is one of the problems. Before, that crosswalk was in line with the sidewalk that came off the park, when we redid the sidewalks out there under the Mass Works grant. So that's where we had the crosswalk. But now that the new construction of that walkway, of that parking lot over there, and they moved the sidewalk closer to the driveway, is one of the problems. Because originally, that side, the original sidewalk was into the town hall parking lot. The lines went right into the parking lot, which is totally illegal. So when we did the project with Mass Works, that was engineered, that's where they placed the crosswalk, was further towards the intersection of Main Street. And now when they redid it, did the parking lot over there, they moved that sidewalk back.
Can it be moved back?
It could, anything's possible. I mean, if you go out there, you can see where the old sidewalk, where the old crosswalk was, because they ground the lines off.
Chris, or, or anybody in the room or on the call, so do we happen to know if it, if it appears to be coming from one direction or the other? That, that the rules aren't being followed, or is it just, you know what I mean? Is it coming up or down? Or, or is it, is it one, seem to be one or the other?
Yeah, Brian, I would say from my own experience, the, for some reason, people come around that corner off of Main, heading toward the church at a higher speed. The other, there were, of the three that went through, two of them were coming from that direction. And I could see that, again, they, they didn't have time to register, perhaps that's it.
It comes up quickly. It comes up quickly, yeah.
Yeah, and, but the FedEx one was, was heading toward Main Street, and I was two feet or three feet into the crosswalk, and I literally had to jump out of the way. That, that guy just blew right through.
Yeah, that's, that's too bad.
And so I, I did have a lengthy conversation with, with the police chief last week. I thought he might be on with us, but he obviously couldn't. But he, he's, I, I think he's not, I, I think his idea of a committee, maybe looking at this, and, and as Phil says, maybe move that crosswalk back, maybe elevate it. Humans are tactile creatures. They might hit that bump the first time, but they're going to remember. Think about going down Jackson Street in Northampton or other places where there are elevated crosswalks. You might miss it the first time, but you'll remember it as, as you go along.
I'm sorry to hear that word myself.
Yeah, I, I figured it was mostly coming off of Main Street and turning up, just because I've seen, I've seen that in action. Wouldn't, would it maybe be, and this would be a question for, for Phil or the state or something, it almost seems that, I don't think the sidewalk needs to be, the crosswalk needs to be raised. I would put the bump before it, because that's going to make people slow down before they actually reach the crosswalk.
You know, but bumps in roads like that, that's a whole different, I mean, you're going to, yeah, I'm not...
I get it, but, you know...
I guess my feeling, I don't know, why do we need a, I don't know that we need a committee to figure this out. I mean, we have public safety officials that, you know, on the, on the roadside, on the police side, you know, who can put their heads together and figure something out, maybe, maybe a few fines in that area and just some presence in that area. But again, it is the center of town, so you have a lot of people who, you know, there's a lot of people like us who drive through there all the time, but of course, Chris, there's always going to be people like a FedEx driver or something that may not come through all the time, and, and they, they're not aware of it, so...
Yeah, I, it, it's just one of those things that boggles my mind, quite frankly.
Is this something, Phil, that you could, could communicate with Chief DeKoschak and see what you can come up with? Because it is, you know, I, I, none of us want there to be any incidents in that, in that crosswalk. Or the one that goes across the other way, or for that matter, down by the library or any of them up at Smith Academy, there's, there's a lot of crosswalks, right, in that little...
Yeah, so Chief DeKoschak and I, as, you know, we met about this prior to your last meeting when the discussion came up, you know, and, you know, and he's right, there's, you know, there's six crosswalks within a 200-yard radius around that intersection. You know, there's six different crosswalks, which is a lot. But, you know, I feel that that crosswalk is the best marked crosswalk in town.
Yeah, no kidding.
I mean, you know, you, you know, you have the visibility, it's a straight road, you have the lights, so, I mean, people just have to pay attention.
And considering how many people cross at the Smith Academy crosswalk.
Yes, which is much worse.
Much worse, yeah.
You know?
And probably a little bit higher speed at that point.
You know, in my capital plan this year, we, we're putting in, you know, Mr. DeKoschak and myself, you know, have talked, you know, to put in some more of the flashing lights on the crosswalk, so maybe people will get used to them. You know, that's what it is, a crosswalk. It's new, it's new to the community.
Is there, is there, is there signage about, you know, maybe throughout that area? Like, can, you know, I, I don't know what it...
There's crosswalk signs.
I know there's crosswalk signs, but just sort of alerting people, and, and I guess I'm thinking about maybe, you know, people who don't come through there as often as most residents do, that it's sort of a congested area or, or, you know, a lot of pedestrian traffic around there. I don't know what the wording would be.
You make a good point, Diana. You know, it's interesting, at Smith Academy, as you pointed out, it's not very well marked there, but it doesn't even say, say "school zone." It doesn't, to warn people, you're coming up on a school zone. But when we were talking at lunch yesterday, they, they made that point, and they said, well, why couldn't you have an elderly crossing area too? Because a lot of our people are using walkers. And that's the other thing they said too, which I think Brenna can had fixed, is that the flashers seem to go out before a lot of them get across the street, so...
Right, so the, I mean, mostly, people crossing where you're talking about, Chris, could be crossing the street a little more slowly than the students from Smith Academy when they're crossing.
Correct.
I get your point, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that there's maybe a lot of little tweaks that can be done here, mainly raising awareness and us talking about this at meetings, and hopefully, people will listen and pay attention that there needs to be a little bit more caution.
And maybe Brenna can talk to the electric contractor to install the lights to see if they could set the timer differently.
I'm sure they can, yeah.
So they can set it a little earlier and a little...
You know, Chris, I never stopped to think about it, but there aren't school zone signs there either. They don't flash, in some communities, as you drive through, they actually flash at the times of days when students are arriving and, and leaving and whatever.
Jackson's a great school.
I mean, I drive by it so much, I never even noticed that they're not there.
Yeah. It's interesting you bring it up, because I was, I was coming on that Straits Road in Whately where the elementary is, and they have 20 mile an hour and flashing lights, and we don't. It, it's sort of, and, you know, I'm just making points.
They have that on Ryan Road too, Ryan Road in Northampton.
Ryan Road does, Jackson Street, for the school. And, you know, why don't we kill two birds? As Phil says, if we can maybe get some grant money to fix all of this. But if, we could even say, you know, slow elders, I don't know, some signage before you get to that crosswalk. Or, as I think Brian pointed out, I think it was, that you put the speed bump before, and, you know, on either side of that crosswalk, that may be effective too.
I, I'm all for the sign mitigation and the light mitigation, I'm not a fan of the speed bump.
Well, speed bumps can be temporary too.
Could be temporary.
You know, they don't have to be made of concrete, they can put them in, and that maybe people get the hint.
I think that, I think that the, the best thing is for Phil and Mike to continue to think about, you know, the safety signage in that area in general. Yes.
Okay.
Phil?
Brenna, you, did Brenna want to add anything, or?
I think Brenna's fine, she's...
I think Brian's going to check with the flashing light, the electrical group, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that seems like a simple fix that might help quite a bit. Okay, great.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Got it.
So we have our next agenda item. Thank you for coming, Brenna, by the way, and thanks, Phil, for, for joining in on the discussion. Our next topic is a discussion with the Open Space Committee Chair, Rich Abbott, is...
That was postponed, that's been postponed.
Oh, okay.
We amended the agenda yesterday and...
Oh, I don't think I saw that, okay. Okay, so that's moving right along then. DPW report. So should we just hang on to this open space stuff? This will come back up?
We can take it, and then we'll just use it for a later...
Okay, you'll give it back to me. I looked through it already, so. Mr. Genovese, what has happened out on 139 West Street?
Madam Chair, so, this has been an ongoing, it's on the books for the amount that's in front of you. So, after thorough investigation of this situation, so the meter froze in that trailer, and the resident, in order to have water during the last billing cycle after it froze, installed a meter. So when we did the read, it looked like the meter went from whatever it ended at, all the way around, again. That created this bill, which you can see is...
$46,000 for water bill.
So we went back and did some...
For at the trailer park.
Yeah, so we went back and did some history, you know, and there's been some minimal bills of $75. So, we really couldn't, we can't abate the bill.
Right, it's not an abatement. And when Phil says "on the books," just to clarify, the billing commitment, the most recent billing commitment that was authorized by the select board includes this. So you can't yet...
Yeah, so we've never sent the bill to the resident, because we knew it was way out of whack, but we wanted to do some investigation, maybe there was a leak, we didn't know. So, after our investigation, we now understand through the homeowner what had happened there. So we never mailed out the $46,000 bill, because it was too much. So to take it...
Thank God, because I can only imagine if she opened it.
Yeah, so to take it, you know, off of the commitment, it has to be charged through Laurie, who's, we spoke with, as a missed bill, and we're looking to...
Got it, a different process.
So we're trying to recreate another bill for the $75 minimum, but it needs to be modified somewhat.
Correct, and at the same time, because the selectmen authorized the collector to collect the amount, so it's, that amount is going to be reduced by the $46,000.
Isn't that the same with when you have an abatement? What's the difference?
No, the abatement is, as a result of an issue with the...
But we, she's still committed it, we've still committed it to her.
The abatement would be billed...
The bill hadn't been generated yet as part of the commitment.
Oh, okay.
Whereas this was part of that career.
And the homeowner would have submitted the abatement.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So the abatement, and so just to, just clarify that, is, a reading is a reading, and so, you know, with an abatement, you're adjusting the amount of the bill, not necessarily, you're not adjusting the reading, you're not abating it.
So, you know, just a little bit more on this, is that we read the meter today, we went down there and read the meter today, and it, you know, and the meter's working correctly now. So, this shouldn't happen, as long as it doesn't freeze again.
Okay, so you just need a motion to...
To what? What is the, what are we, what are we...
You're voting to authorize this adjustment, which will change the commitment. If this had been taken care of, resolved before the board voted the commitment, you wouldn't even, yeah, you wouldn't be doing anything.
So I will make a motion to adjust the water and sewer commitment, previously approved, by $46,102, to lessen it by $46,102.24.
Correct.
Due to a misbilling.
Due to a mis...
But you are going to charge them a $75 minimum charge.
But if they never got the bill, we don't care, I mean, does that need to be part of this?
Or is it that dollar amount less $75?
Correct, it's the $46,102.24.
Less $75.
Less than $75, yeah.
So $46,000...
Twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Brian, you can go.
Thank you, Ed.
So, all right, let's redo it, so Karen has this right. I'll make a motion to amend the committed water and sewer amount, previously voted upon, by $46,027.24.
Second.
That's correct.
Okay.
You got it.
A motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm glad we didn't send that bill to that woman.
Well, that was so outrageous, it would have been kind of a laughing thing, if you got a bill that high, you'd be like, wow.
It's happened, though.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It's happened where a pipe has froze during the winter, and no one's in an occupied house, and...
Those are tough.
The water's coming out of the windows.
That's a tough, that's always a tough vote to me.
And that's all you have for us tonight, Phil?
That's it.
Right.
How are things going on five and 10? We're buttoned up for the winter.
We're buttoned, yes, we're buttoned up for the winter. Haven't heard anything from any of the residents, the road's smoother. That's about it, I mean, I haven't...
I mean, we did have the meeting with the residents, which, is that up on, is that, pardon?
It'll be up tonight.
Okay, we did have a meeting with the residents from out there, that will be put up on YouTube, and I assume a link on the website if people wanted to watch that. But people came in with, you know, their concerns about the gas leak, and some of the, some concerns with the project as a whole, and lots of, you know, appreciation for our emergency services department, so.
Phil, do you happen to know if the residents, as Michael, our engineer, asked them to do, if they were so inclined, if any reached out, and actually, we had some equipment moved, or relocated, or is it all gone now for winter?
Yeah, so there's no equipment down there.
Okay.
I think it's all gone.
All right, I just, you know.
The only thing that's there is the barrels over the well points.
Right, but even the residents said they want those, because that's where...
Yeah, they have to stay there anyways.
Yeah, those have to stay there.
You know, that was one of the conditions with Mast DOT, with snow removal, that we cover the wellheads, so they don't hook them with the plow.
I thought that that was more for when the equipment returns in the spring.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, and that was part of the conversation, is we will have a pre-construction meeting with the residents, again, and the various contractors that are part of this, to make sure, we all set the expectation going forward.
You know, one of the good points of it is that, you know, we started at the deepest point, you know what I mean? So, we went the 1,300 feet or everywhere, we went with the pipe that, you know, now it's coming up gradually, so hopefully it'll go a little bit smoother, but who's to know?
Right.
You know, who's to know?
No.
It happens every day in construction.
Well, you just, you plan for the best.
Yeah, you know, we surely will, you know, keep the residents in mind, and, you know, we'll have, we'll also speak with the, you know, with the officers that are doing traffic detail, about letting them in and out of driveways, because that seemed to be one of the concerns, so.
Right.
But we'll have that conversation when we...
I thought that they brought up a lot of good points, and...
Agreed.
And some concerns that I wasn't aware of, and it was, it was, I was glad we had them.
But the more north we go, the wider the tree belt gets on that side. Where they started by, you know, by the river crossing there is that, you know, the houses are tight to the road, there's not room.
Right, they sure are, yeah.
There's no room, so.
Right.
You know.
That's true, they really are close to the road.
After, you know, after all said and done, you know, they'll have a smooth road with sewer access, and a new water services, so, you know.
Okay, Phil, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Marlene?
Let's see, we have submitted before the board here, Karen, actually, she just did her first pass-through of renewing the...
Yep, good job.
Annual licenses for 2022. And so you have in front of you a list of those liquor licenses, Class 1, 2, and 3 auto dealer licenses, entertainment licenses, and automatic amusement licenses.
I'll make a motion to approve the license renewals for 2022 as presented. Is that good enough, or do you need to break it down, Marlene?
No, that's, that's good, and this will be a record.
Down on the sheet.
It is, and it'll be attached to the meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion made in second, any additional comments? Any further discussion? I forgot my, what I say.
Your spiel?
My spiel. I just want to say, Karen, I used to do this licensing, it's a ton of work.
It is.
And you did a great job, so thank you very much.
Indeed.
Not only these licenses, she manages the licenses for the Board of Health as well.
And that's a big deal, too.
There's a lot of those.
Quite a few of them.
Yeah, yes. Excellent, excellent work. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just to remind townspeople, we did not charge liquor license fees for our restaurants, as we try to help them recover from...
Or bars.
Or bars.
Restaurants and bars.
Restaurants and bars, as we try to help them recover from all of this. Okay, Marlene, moving right along.
Next is just a quick update regarding the update, or the future update of the Towns' master plan. I had mentioned this at a previous meeting. So what you have before you is a draft copy of a posting that we would publish on the Towns' website in Town Hall. This is to, you know, create a master plan committee. The planning board has also reviewed this, and I have had some conversations with Pioneer Valley Planning regarding funding for the update. And when we completed the MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, we had identified the master plan in there as one of the initiatives we wanted to work on, and addressing climate control in the master plan. So I have had some conversations with PVPC, and will be submitting an application or a letter of interest in district local technical assistance, for them to assist Ted Field with the master plan.
Oh, that'd be great.
So that award won't be made until the spring, through the, well, and this will be, so, we'd be doing two things, we're updating the master plan, but we're also executing an action, one of our action plans identified in the MVP. So this would be in the spring, that, right? So I'm thinking that it would probably be late spring, early summer, that the master plan committee would actually start meeting. But I think between now and then, we need to get the word out there, and, you know, ask people to volunteer to be on this committee.
And the master plan...
It's quite a bit of a time.
The master plan will guide new growth and development, housing options, natural resource protection and conservation in town.
Right.
So if people have any interest in any of those things, you know, it's something that's really important for the town to do, and really important for the town to keep updated, and it's, you know, it's proactive, well, I mean, ours is 20 years old, so, but it's an important document when it's done, so maybe there's some townspeople watching to, you know, who would want to take part in that and help. And there certainly was a pretty good-sized master plan committee last time, it'd be nice if we had...
A nine-member committee, and I talked with the representative at PVPC, they're typically seeing between nine and 12 on a committee, and so, you know, we could try to, you know, appoint 12 people, if you find that acceptable, the select board would make those appointments. While the committee, you know, would be meeting frequently, there would be subcommittees, focus groups...
Right.
Out of that, say, 12-member committee, and, you know, they would be concentrating on specific...
Could you find out, I remember some people who, I think, a couple people maybe, who were on the master plan last time, but it might be nice to see if any of them are willing to, you know, just, just because they have some experience on this, and...
I have had a conversation with one person, and he is interested in being on the master plan again.
Okay, good.
But just absolutely can reach out to other individuals.
It's a good starting point.
Yeah, do we know, either officially or unofficially, if perhaps some of those members on this master plan committee can or should be from various town committees? Like, should somebody from the planning committee be on there? Should somebody from open space be on there?
Oh, yes, absolutely, they would. So there would be, yes.
Categories, I guess.
From open space would be represented.
Along with residents, by the way.
Planning, conservation would be represented, yes, they would.
Okay.
One or two people from, from those boards and committees, and then you would have a few at-large members.
Yeah, okay, that, I just wanted to...
Yes.
Clarify that, or ask that question, because it seemed to make sense.
So there won't necessarily be nine fully open positions, but there'll be...
Right.
Right. There'll be plenty of room if there's volunteers that would step up.
Yeah, I think probably what we might want to work on, in Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, you know, we can see how many were on it last time, which of course was 20 years ago.
Yeah.
But, you know, if ultimately there's six, I'm just making up a number, if there's six from town boards, so there's six, right?
Right.
So now we've got to decide, okay, now how many residents? Would it be seven? Would it be eight? Would it be six? Would it be, you know, whatever.
We have residents who work in these fields, who work for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who work for Franklin Regional Council of Governments, you know, who really could bring a lot of expertise.
We're very fortunate to have individuals at large, that served in an at-large seat capacity, that have background.
So it'd be great to tap some of those, but you don't have to have that kind of background to be an effective member of this, if this is something that interests you.
No, but if I could just repeat what Diana had said a few minutes ago, you know, the master plan initiative is about receiving input regarding, the master plan will guide new growth and development, housing options, and natural resource protection and conservation in town. So those are kind of the four categories, as well as other things that fall within those. But I think those are the important things, for the master plan, of course, but also those are the important things that residents who may have an interest in this should know, that that's sort of where, what's being driven.
Right, yeah. Okay. So we'll get this posted very soon, and, yeah, anybody interested can contact my office, and, but, you know, maybe so sometime after the first of the year, you know, maybe a January, February meeting, I'll have for the select board, those representatives from various boards, current various boards and committees.
Thank you.
Can we backtrack, because there's something in the signature file, this 2022 seasonal population increase estimate, do we need to vote this, or just, because we obviously don't have a seasonal population?
Exactly, I talked to Lydia on that, and she said, we don't do it.
Right.
But I don't know if the ABCC even requires that form just to be filed with an NANA.
They have, they do.
Okay.
They do, yes.
So we just, we don't vote it, we just all sign?
Correct, yeah, you just list it as zero.
Whatever they send, I just sign and send back.
There you go.
And then the second one is just part of this, the renewal certification?
It is, it just lists if there are any, and again, liquor licenses for people that haven't renewed, which there are none, and for people...
So in other words, if we had some available?
Yes, and if people have, or if the board had pulled their licenses, and again, there are none.
Thanks, Karen.
We almost missed that. Sorry, Marlene, go, go ahead.
That's okay. One other thing I had intended on including in my report was, the accountant has closed out and filed FY '21 finances with the Department of Revenue, submitted free cash, and free cash was certified Monday, Wednesday, it's today, Wednesday, maybe it was Monday, or maybe it was last Friday, I'm losing track of time. So, anyway, FY '21.
That's great.
We're done.
That's great.
That's great, that makes...
Closed out, I mean, that's pretty good.
Budget, season, no, yeah.
And is the new tax rate officially yet? Or do we have to vote on that at some point? Did we already vote on that?
No, the tax rate was, was approved by Department of Revenue.
Okay, so we can, I don't know that we've talked about it on TV, have we?
We haven't, actually.
No, we haven't.
I don't think we have.
We haven't.
So the tax, I don't have it in front of me, because I wasn't prepared to speak to it, but the tax rate has gone down...
Yes.
Right.
For next year, for next year, from 14...
I don't have it in front of me.
About 52 cents.
It was 52 cents.
Yeah, to 13, the high 13, 1370 something, I think, and my apologies, townspeople, I...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have that with me, and...
Since you brought up the other thing, I thought I'd just ask the question.
Well, I think it was just set since it was after our last meeting, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but I mean, since you brought up the fiscal year, I I just, it just reminded me of, I think it went down 52 cents, that's right. So we'll have an official release so people know. But good job, Jenny, and the treasurers and the accountants.
The whole team.